Councilor Flaherty.
Yeah.
Councilor Jackson. Councilor Lamatina.
Yeah.
Councilor Linehan.
Yeah.
Councilor McCarthy.
Yeah.
Councilor Murphy.
Yeah.
Councilor O'Malley.
Present.
Councilor Presley. Councilor Wu. Councilor Yancy. And Councilor Zachem. Mr. President, we do have a quorum.
Right. I've been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. I would ask at this time for all councilors and guests to please rise. And I will ask Councilor O'Malley to come to the podium to introduce today's clergy. After the invocation is delivered, I would ask that you all remain standing so that Councilor O'Malley can lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilor O'Malley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good afternoon, colleagues. Today, I have the distinct honor of welcoming Monsignor William Helmick to deliver our opening prayer. Monsignor Helmick is the pastor at St. Teresa of Avila Parish in West Roxbury. He has been a spiritual leader for countless folks in the Parkway, not only in the parish community, but at the school community as well. Two weeks ago, I had the distinct honor of joining many St. Teresa's parishioners for the 500th anniversary of the birth of St. Teresa of Avila's, of her birth. And Cardinal O'Malley came and concelebrated a mass with Monsignor Helmick and several others, and it was just a wonderful celebration of the parish community and the good work that he and so many of his colleagues have done for so many people. So please join me in welcoming Monsignor William Helmick of St. Teresa of Avila Parish in West Roxbury.
Let us pray. Father, we ask our blessing on the members of the Boston City Council and their families and all the citizens of Boston. May the members of the Boston City Council remember always that their responsibility as members of the council is to enable our city by their legislative activities to grow as a community. May our city councilors remember that they are the face of the people they represent. May they remember that they are called to preserve and defend the dignity of our citizens in a trialless and demanding pursuit of the common good. May they remember that a political society like the city of Boston endures when it seeks to satisfy common needs by stimulating the growth of all its members, especially people in situations of greater vulnerability or risk. May the members of our Boston City Council always remember that their activity must always be based on care for the people to this they have been invited and called by the people who elected them. And we ask this through Christ our Lord.
Amen. I thank, thank you, Monsignor Helmick, for your inspiring message and prayer. Councilor O'Malley.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under.
Thank you, counselor, and thank you, Monsignor. Madam Clerk, could you please recognize that Counselor Baker and Counselor Jackson are here? At this time, I would ask that Counselor Presley and Counselor McCarthy come to the dais and an opportunity as part of presentation to introduce Faces of Faith for Breast Cancer Awareness.
Good afternoon. Thank you, President Linehan. Very pleased to be up here at the dais with the vice chair of the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities. I want to thank Carrie Jordan for putting these beautiful models and images on the screens today here in the chamber. Today, I was reminded of one of my favorite Plato quotes, "Be kind; for everyone you meet is fighting a hard battle." It would be easy to think that the most important things in life are fighting to win elections or sports contests or games. But just to offer some perspective, the toughest battles are for life itself. And all of us have seen people we love fight that fight, fight the cancer fight. Today is an opportunity for us to pay homage to the power of faith, something we can never have too much of. Faces of Faith is a project that shines a light on the shared strength, courage, and resilience of cancer survivors. Cancer survivors from across the greater Boston area and an assortment of faith-based congregations have all told their brave stories through portrait. Faces of Faith is a collaboration between the Dana Farber Harvard Cancer Center, the American Cancer Society, and the Black Ministerial Alliance of Greater Boston. This series photographed by Sam Ogden is truly a testament to the power of faith. Researchers at Dana Farber are on a singular quest to find new and innovative ways to conquer cancer. As the Deputy Associate Director of the Initiative to Eliminate Cancer Disparities, Karen Burns White, who I'll invite up along with our models, if you guys want to come up, join us here, works to improve the health and wellness of communities by eradicating cancer disparities. All of you ladies should come as well. I am grateful to Karen for her tremendous work to actualize this project. It is because of leaders like you, Karen, that survivors are able to envision, in the face of a cancer diagnosis and fight, hope, and to demonstrate faith each day. And now I'll invite to the podium Counselor McCarthy to say a few words before we hear from Karen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Thanks to Jessica Tarver also for putting a lot of this together, and thank you all for coming. Come on up. Cancer has negatively affected my family and negatively affected, I would guess, just about everybody in this chamber today. So having people who have fought a good fight and survive and continue to survive is a wonderful, wonderful thing, and that's what it really is all about. And I appreciate Counselor Presley's kind words, and I'm looking forward to hearing from everybody up there. Wonderful to see people who fight a fight and win a fight, so.
That's right.
I wouldn't fight you.
Good morning again. My name is Karen Burns White, and I serve as the Deputy Associate Director for the Initiative to Eliminate Cancer Disparities at Dana Farber Harvard Cancer Center. It gives me great pleasure to stand before you this morning, Counselor Presley, Counselor McCarthy. Many thanks to you for your hearing the call and your willingness to host the Faces of Faith exhibit. It was nine years ago when a collaboration started with nine churches, the American Cancer Society, and the Black Ministerial Alliance. Our sole purpose was to marshal efforts around resources, to bring forth culturally programming, to address the gaps in cancer care, treatment, and prevention, as well as improve the health and wellness of our congregations and community. Two years ago, the network identified cancer survivors in their respective congregations who vowed to be bold and step out and state, "I will not be silent anymore." These individuals, who as cancer survivors are living vibrant and quality lives, willing to take action, advocate on behalf of others, and most importantly, increase awareness by sharing their testimony. Behind me, and I'm sure there are others, are cancer survivors and representation of the Faces of Faith. Can you please acknowledge them? Although this month highlights breast cancer awareness, you see, none of us are exempt from the disease of cancer. As we have already witnessed among us, there are cancer survivors. Some of us are caregivers. Many of us know individuals who have or had or battling the disease. And we also know that cancer does not discriminate against age, race, ethnicity, class, socioeconomic status, education level. This disease impacts us all. And I would not, I don't want to be remiss if I didn't address the issues that continue to plague our communities regarding the unequal burden of cancer. Why is it that we're doing such a phenomenal job promoting screening and mammography, but when we look at breast cancer mortality, we still have issues? Why is it that the American Medical Journal recently reported that low-income cancer patients are less likely to take part in clinical trials for new treatments? In the study that was recently in Cancer Epidemiology, Biomarkers, and Prevention that stated more than 100,000 women diagnosed with breast cancer in 2010 and 2011, blacks and Latinos were most likely to be diagnosed at late stages. Although complex, the message is simple. We must be, we must increase awareness, we must be serious about advocacy, and we must take deliberate action. So on behalf of the Faces of Faith exhibit, on behalf of the Faith-Based Cancer Disparities Network, I thank you for your time, your recognition, and your ongoing support of making a healthy difference in the city of Boston. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Presley. Thank you, Counselor McCarthy. And the Faces of Faith for being here with us today. If there are no corrections to be made, the minutes of the last meeting will stand approved. Seeing, hearing, no objections to minutes, are they so approved? Madam Clerk, could you please recognize that Counselor Yancy is here with us? And that we have 100% attendance here today? Madam Clerk, communications from his honor, the mayor, please.
Docket number 1721, Message in Order Authorizing the City of Boston to Accept and Expend a Grant Not to Exceed $450,000 from the Educational Institutions for the Purpose of Funding Internship Programs for the City of Boston.
Docket 1721 be assigned to the Committee on Education.
Docket number 1722, Message in Order Authorizing the Department of Neighborhood Development to Apply for, Accept, and Expend United States Environmental Protection Agency, EPA, for Brownfield Cleanup Grant Funding Not to Exceed $400,000.
Docket 1722 will be assigned to the Committee on Economic Development, Planning, and Labor.
Docket number 1723, Message in Order for the Confirmation of the Reappointment of David Buraducci as a Member of the Boston Landmarks Commission for a Term Expiring June 30, 2017.
Could you read them all, Madam Clerk?
I will. Thank you, Mr. President. Docket number 1724, Message in Order for the Confirmation of the Reappointment of Kirsten Hoffman as a Member of the Boston Landmarks Commission for a Term Expiring June 30, 2017. Docket number 1725, Message in Order for the Confirmation of the Reappointment of Lynn Smilich as a Member of the Boston Landmarks Commission for a Term Expiring June 30, 2017. Docket number 1726, Message in Order for the Confirmation of the Appointment of Richard Yeager, Yeager, I'm sorry, as a Member of the Boston Landmarks Commission for a Term Expiring June 30, 2018. Docket number 1727, Message in Order for the Confirmation of the Reappointment of Susan Gojanian as a Member of the Boston Landmarks Commission for a Term Expiring June 30, 2018. Docket number 1728, Message in Order for the Confirmation of the Reappointment of Christopher Hart as an alternate member of the Boston Landmarks Commission for a Term Expiring June 30, 2018.
Docket 1723 through 1728 will be assigned to the Committee on Economic Development, Planning, and Labor.
Docket number 1729, Message in Order for the Confirmation of the Appointment of Molly Cantala as an alternative member of the Aberdeen Architectural Conservation District Commission for a Term Expiring May 31, 2018.
Docket 1729 will be assigned to the Committee on Economic Development, Planning, and Labor.
Docket number 1730, Message in Order for the Confirmation of the Reappointment of Kathleen McDermott as an alternate member of the Bay Village Historic District Commission for a Term Expiring April 1, 2016.
Docket 1730 will be assigned to the Committee on Economic Development, Planning, and Labor.
Docket number 1731, Message in Order for the Confirmation of the Reappointment of John Caraff as a member, as a full member of the Port Point Channel Landmark District, expiring May 1, 2017.
Docket 1731 be assigned to the Committee on Economic Development, Planning, and Labor.
Docket number 1732, Message in Order for the Confirmation of the Appointment of Mark Sacconi, CPA, as a Member of the Audit Committee for a Term Expiring November 1, 2020.
Docket 1732 will be assigned to the Committee on Post-Audit and Oversight. Madam Clerk, reports of public officers and others, please. And could you read docket 1733 through and 1734?
Thank you, Mr. President. Docket number 1733, Communication was received from the city clerk of the filing by the Boston redevelopment authority of the Fourth Amendment to the Report and Decision on the Pasl F2 Hotel Chapter 121A Project. And docket number 1734, Communication was received from the city clerk of the filing of the Boston redevelopment authority of the Fourth Amendment to the Report and Decision of Fourth Amendment to the Report and Decision on the Restoration Housing Chapter 121A Project.
Docket 1733 and 1734 will be placed on file.
Docket number 1415.
Madam Clerk, these are matters recently heard for possible action.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Would you please read them?
I would. Docket number 1415, Message in Ordinance to Ban the Possession, Sale, or Display of Any Toy or Imitation Firearms That Substantially Duplicates or Can Reasonably Be Perceived to be an Actual Firearms from Public Spaces in the City of Boston, filed in the office of the city clerk on August 31, 2015.
Chair recognizes Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Flaherty?
Moving to, for passage of 1415, we had a hearing yesterday that was attended by Commissioner Billy Evans and Dan Malhearn, director of the city's public safety initiative. And the commissioner brought his ballistic team in, and I know that he provided an opportunity for those that, who were not able to make yesterday's scheduled hearing, along with Chair of Public Safety Counselor Murphy, Counselor Baker, myself. We had an opportunity to see firsthand how real these replica toy guns looked, same weight, same design. And so the commissioner explained that the replica firearms are commonly used in robberies and other crimes throughout the city. He also discussed the fear of any officer having to make the decision to use lethal force in a case where someone appears to have a real gun, when in fact, it's a replica or a toy gun. So pretty self-explanatory in the commissioner wanted to stay ahead of this. He cited a list of recent crimes where these weapons were used. In fact, the night before the hearing, one actually occurred in our colleague Counselor Baker's district. So with that, replica firearms are a real threat to public safety, and at this time, I'm recommending that this order, ordinance 1415 passes.
Counselor Flaherty moves. Acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 1415. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1415 has passed.
Docket number 1434, Order for Hearing Regarding Enforcement of the No More Than Four Zoning Amendment.
Chair recognizes the chair of the Committee on City and Neighborhood Services, Veterans Affairs, Counselor McCarthy.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. We had a really thorough working session regarding docket number 1434, No More Than Four. Counselor Zachem, Counselor Siomo, Baker, and O'Malley with Inspection Services Commissioner. It was a very open discussion, and we had tremendous benefit. At this point in time, I'd like to keep it in committee so we can continue to have working sessions, as there have been some questions that were asked and unanswered, and ISD promises to get back to us post-ASLE.
All right. Thank you, Counselor McCarthy. Counselor Siomo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let me rise to thank the chairman for having, as he said, a very productive working session. There were many unanswered questions. We worked with Commissioner Christopher and his legal counsel, Kim. They're waiting for a ruling from the Corporation Council to see how to proceed to make this a more effective tool, and it is just one tool of many that we have to deal with overcrowding and life safety issues, and particularly in mine and Counselor Zachem. I'd like to thank Counselor Zachem for his partnership in this issue that disparately impacts our two districts. So I look forward to the next working session and the answers from Corporation Council and working with the administration. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Siomo. Counselor Zachem.
Thank you, Mr. President. I thank Chairman McCarthy and Counselor Siomo for working together on this, and our colleagues who also attended the working session. It was productive, but as both my colleagues have already said, there were a lot of unanswered questions. And, you know, for me, I think the thrust of this discussion was that the city needs to be very proactive, I think, in using all the tools in the toolbox to not only make sure that everyone in our neighborhoods, including students, lives in a safe, clean environment, but also that long-term residents, families who do live in our student-heavy neighborhoods like Mission Hill, like Alston Brighton, have all the city's tools at their disposal to try and mitigate and ameliorate some of the negative quality of life issues that happen, when we do have thousands of students living off campus. Sometimes, you know, six, eight, 10 of them in an apartment, sometimes only a couple, they can still cause some issues. But it was nice to hear from Commissioner Christopher that he and the mayor are continuing to work with us on this. We look forward to getting an opinion from the Corporation Council on just how aggressively the city can work on enforcing the zoning amendment that, you know, my predecessor and Counselor Siomo and many other of our colleagues worked to put in place some years ago. Look forward to the next session. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Zachem. Docket 1434 will remain in the Committee on City, Neighborhood Services, and Veterans Madam Clerk, motions, orders, and resolutions, please.
Docket number 1735, Counselor Murphy offered the following resolution urging the state legislature to support and approve Senate Bill 1837, an act relative to personal transit systems.
Chair recognizes Counselor Murphy on docket 1735.
Thank you, Mr. President. A few weeks ago, the Committee on the Environment chaired by my colleague Counselor Matt O'Malley held a hearing on docket order 1299, which was an act to develop personal solar transportation in the city of Boston. And one of the linchpins of this happening in Boston is, in order for it to go forward, the next step has to be the passage of a Massachusetts Senate Bill 1837, which will allow the development of solar-powered transit systems in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Solar-powered transit systems are being developed all over the world, in China, in India, in other cities across the country. I envision Boston's to be a pilot program that goes from north to south station, would be on a monorail, it would be solar-powered, it will be privately funded, no taxpayer funding goes into it because it is a new technology, and it would link north and south stations as our gateway into this new technology for moving folks around. We all know that our highways are clogged almost 24/7, seven days a week, no matter where you, if you get in your own personal vehicle to go anywhere, you're logjammed in traffic. We also know that the MBTA is about $6 or $8 billion in arrears on maintenance, and that Governor Baker is now struggling with that. And that's from years of underfunding at Beacon Hill that's kind of caught up with them. So rather than try to add to that public debt, this would be a way that we could reduce our carbon footprint and also make some improvements to our own transportation infrastructure in the city of Boston. So while docket 1299 sits in committee and has had its hearing, I file this order as the first step towards achieving the goals that were in 1299, getting the city council on record, supporting a resolution to the state senate which would adopt Senate Bill 1837 and allow this to go forward with Beacon Hill's approval. So I'm asking suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 1735 at this time. Thank you.
Just a quick reset. Thank you. Councils back in session. Just clarification from the clerk. So Counselor Murphy moves suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 1735. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1735 has been adopted. There are no personnel orders, and therefore, we're at late files, and there are no late file matters. At this time, anybody wishing to remove a matter from the green sheets may do so at this time. Counselor Flaherty.
Thank you, Mr. President. Rise to move from the green sheet, docket 1414.
Madam Clerk, would you pull that and read that, please?
Thank you.
Page 10.
In the committee, page 10 of 16. In the Committee on Government Operations, docket number 1414, Sponsored by the Mayor, Message in Ordinance Committing City of Boston Code of Ordinances, Chapter 2-8.1, Salary of City Councilors and City of Boston Code of Ordinances.
Thank you.[932.41][932.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[933.41][933.41](CROWD CHEERING)[934.41][934.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[935.41][935.41](CROWD CHEERING)[936.41][936.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[937.41][937.41](CROWD CHEERING)[938.41][938.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[939.41][939.41](CROWD CHEERING)[940.41][940.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[941.41][941.41](CROWD CHEERING)[942.41][942.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[943.41][943.41](CROWD CHEERING)[944.41][944.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[945.41][945.41](CROWD CHEERING)[946.41][946.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[947.41][947.41](CROWD CHEERING)[948.41][948.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[949.41][949.41](CROWD CHEERING)[950.41][950.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[951.41][951.41](CROWD CHEERING)[952.41][952.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[953.41][953.41](CROWD CHEERING)[954.41][954.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[955.41][955.41](CROWD CHEERING)[956.41][956.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[957.41][957.41](CROWD CHEERING)[958.41][958.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[959.41][959.41](CROWD CHEERING)[960.41][960.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[961.41][961.41](CROWD CHEERING)[962.41][962.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[963.41][963.41](CROWD CHEERING)[964.41][964.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[965.41][965.41](CROWD CHEERING)[966.41][966.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[967.41][967.41](CROWD CHEERING)[968.41][968.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[969.41][969.41](CROWD CHEERING)[970.41][970.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[971.41][971.41](CROWD CHEERING)[972.41][972.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[973.41][973.41](CROWD CHEERING)[974.41][974.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[975.41][975.41](CROWD CHEERING)[976.41][976.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[977.41][977.41](CROWD CHEERING)[978.41][978.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[979.41][979.41](CROWD CHEERING)[980.41][980.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[981.41][981.41](CROWD CHEERING)[982.41][982.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[983.41][983.41](CROWD CHEERING)[984.41][984.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[985.41][985.41](CROWD CHEERING)[986.41][986.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[987.41][987.41](CROWD CHEERING)[988.41][988.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[989.41][989.41](CROWD CHEERING)[990.41][990.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[991.41][991.41](CROWD CHEERING)[992.41][992.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[993.41][993.41](CROWD CHEERING)[994.41][994.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[995.41][995.41](CROWD CHEERING)[996.41][996.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[997.41][997.41](CROWD CHEERING)[998.41][998.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[999.41][999.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1000.41][1000.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1001.41][1001.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1002.41][1002.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1003.41][1003.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1004.41][1004.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1005.41][1005.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1006.41][1006.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1007.41][1007.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1008.41][1008.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1009.41][1009.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1010.41][1010.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1011.41][1011.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1012.41][1012.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1013.41][1013.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1014.41][1014.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1015.41][1015.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1016.41][1016.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1017.41][1017.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1018.41][1018.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1019.41][1019.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1020.41][1020.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1021.41][1021.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1022.41][1022.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1023.41][1023.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1024.41][1024.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1025.41][1025.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1026.41][1026.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1027.41][1027.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1028.41][1028.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1029.41][1029.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1030.41][1030.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1031.41][1031.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1032.41][1032.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1033.41][1033.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1034.41][1034.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1035.41][1035.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1036.41][1036.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1037.41][1037.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1038.41][1038.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1039.41][1039.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1040.41][1040.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1041.41][1041.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1042.41][1042.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1043.41][1043.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1044.41][1044.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1045.41][1045.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1046.41][1046.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1047.41][1047.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1048.41][1048.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1049.41][1049.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1050.41][1050.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1051.41][1051.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1052.41][1052.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1053.41][1053.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1054.41][1054.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1055.41][1055.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1056.41][1056.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1057.41][1057.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1058.41][1058.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1059.41][1059.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1060.41][1060.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1061.41][1061.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1062.41][1062.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1063.41][1063.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1064.41][1064.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1065.41][1065.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1066.41][1066.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1067.41][1067.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1068.41][1068.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1069.41][1069.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1070.41][1070.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1071.41][1071.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1072.41][1072.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1073.41][1073.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1074.41][1074.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1075.41][1075.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1076.41][1076.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1077.41][1077.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1078.41][1078.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1079.41][1079.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1080.41][1080.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1081.41][1081.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1082.41][1082.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1083.41][1083.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1084.41][1084.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1085.41][1085.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1086.41][1086.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1087.41][1087.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1088.41][1088.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1089.41][1089.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1090.41][1090.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1091.41][1091.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1092.41][1092.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1093.41][1093.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1094.41][1094.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1095.41][1095.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1096.41][1096.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1097.41][1097.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1098.41][1098.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1099.41][1099.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1100.41][1100.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1101.41][1101.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1102.41][1102.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1103.41][1103.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1104.41][1104.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1105.41][1105.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1106.41][1106.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1107.41][1107.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1108.41][1108.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1109.41][1109.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1110.41][1110.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1111.41][1111.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1112.41][1112.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1113.41][1113.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1114.41][1114.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1115.41][1115.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1116.41][1116.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1117.41][1117.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1118.41][1118.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1119.41][1119.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1120.41][1120.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1121.41][1121.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1122.41][1122.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1123.41][1123.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1124.41][1124.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1125.41][1125.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1126.41][1126.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1127.41][1127.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1128.41][1128.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1129.41][1129.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1130.41][1130.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1131.41][1131.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1132.41][1132.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1133.41][1133.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1134.41][1134.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1135.41][1135.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1136.41][1136.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1137.41][1137.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1138.41][1138.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1139.41][1139.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1140.41][1140.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1141.41][1141.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1142.41][1142.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1143.41][1143.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1144.41][1144.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1145.41][1145.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1146.41][1146.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1147.41][1147.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1148.41][1148.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1149.41][1149.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1150.41][1150.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1151.41][1151.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1152.41][1152.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1153.41][1153.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1154.41][1154.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1155.41][1155.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1156.41][1156.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1157.41][1157.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1158.41][1158.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1159.41][1159.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1160.41][1160.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1161.41][1161.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1162.41][1162.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1163.41][1163.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1164.41][1164.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1165.41][1165.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1166.41][1166.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1167.41][1167.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1168.41][1168.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1169.41][1169.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1170.41][1170.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1171.41][1171.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1172.41][1172.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1173.41][1173.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1174.41][1174.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1175.41][1175.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1176.41][1176.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1177.41][1177.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1178.41][1178.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1179.41][1179.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1180.41][1180.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1181.41][1181.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1182.41][1182.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1183.41][1183.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1184.41][1184.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1185.41][1185.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1186.41][1186.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1187.41][1187.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1188.41][1188.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1189.41][1189.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1190.41][1190.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1191.41][1191.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1192.41][1192.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1193.41][1193.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1194.41][1194.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1195.41][1195.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1196.41][1196.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1197.41][1197.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1198.41][1198.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1199.41][1199.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1200.41][1200.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1201.41][1201.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1202.41][1202.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1203.41][1203.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1204.41][1204.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1205.41][1205.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1206.41][1206.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1207.41][1207.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1208.41][1208.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1209.41][1209.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1210.41][1210.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1211.41][1211.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1212.41][1212.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1213.41][1213.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1214.41][1214.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1215.41][1215.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1216.41][1216.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1217.41][1217.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1218.41][1218.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1219.41][1219.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1220.41][1220.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1221.41][1221.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1222.41][1222.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1223.41][1223.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1224.41][1224.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1225.41][1225.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1226.41][1226.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1227.41][1227.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1228.41][1228.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1229.41][1229.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1230.41][1230.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1231.41][1231.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1232.41][1232.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1233.41][1233.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1234.41][1234.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1235.41][1235.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1236.41][1236.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1237.41][1237.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1238.41][1238.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1239.41][1239.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1240.41][1240.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1241.41][1241.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1242.41][1242.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1243.41][1243.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1244.41][1244.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1245.41][1245.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1246.41][1246.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1247.41][1247.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1248.41][1248.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1249.41][1249.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1250.41][1250.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1251.41][1251.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1252.41][1252.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1253.41][1253.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1254.41][1254.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1255.41][1255.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1256.41][1256.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1257.41][1257.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1258.41][1258.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1259.41][1259.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1260.41][1260.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1261.41][1261.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1262.41][1262.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1263.41][1263.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1264.41][1264.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1265.41][1265.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1266.41][1266.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1267.41][1267.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1268.41][1268.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1269.41][1269.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1270.41][1270.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1271.41][1271.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1272.41][1272.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1273.41][1273.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1274.41][1274.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1275.41][1275.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1276.41][1276.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1277.41][1277.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1278.41][1278.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1279.41][1279.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1280.41][1280.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1281.41][1281.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1282.41][1282.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1283.41][1283.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1284.41][1284.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1285.41][1285.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1286.41][1286.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1287.41][1287.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1288.41][1288.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1289.41][1289.41](CROWD CHEERING)[1290.41][1290.41](MUTTERING VOICES)[1291.41][1291.41](CROWD CHEERING)